All right, we will, uh, welcome to the City of Orville Planning Commission meeting, special meeting, uh, February twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Luke, pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Call the order.
Do you mind if I just do a quick sound check with those on Zoom?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Hey, Brandon, could you confirm that you can hear us speaking?
Yes, I can.
My key volume turned up over there, I think. I think he was able to come through. Just one moment, Brandon.
I don't see where to see.
Oh, I see up there.
I don't see another one.
It's outside.
On the TV was working.
On the TV?
Yeah, it was working.
Okay, it's just quite, we can't hear.
You know.
Keep it going.
Brandon, can you try to say something again?
He's on mute there.
Hello, hello, can anyone hear me?
Go on, where?
Again?
Hello, hello, hi.
Can you hear?
Barely, he should talk, he should go a little more.
Can you talk a little bit louder, Brandon?
Sure, is this service any better? I did turn up my gain all the way.
Thank you. Perfect, I just wanted to confirm, so we'll go ahead and proceed with the call to order. Uh, Glenn A. Rossi?
Here.
Marissa Haley?
Here.
Natalie Sheard?
Here.
Warren Jensen?
Here.
I showed Terry Smith as absent. Vice Chairperson Wyatt Jenkins?
Here.
And I also have Chairperson Carl Durling as absent.
Uh, thank you, do we have any speakers for non-agenda items?
We do not.
We will begin our public hearing, um, for item number one, staff report.
Okay. So, um, we had, hello, everybody. Um, we have vertical bridge of the applicant that has applied for a use permit to construct a new unmanned wireless telecommunication, telecommunications facility for T-Mobile, located at thirty-four twenty-five Orange Avenue due to lack of coverage in the area. The project is located on the southern half of a four point three-one acre parcel, and the northern half is occupied by the Oro Lake Municipal Park. There has been an EME RF safety study provided, that's in your packet, and the wireless tower will be in compliance with the FCC guidelines limiting public exposure to radio frequency energy. Uh, visually, this tower will be configured to resemble a pine tree with the antennas and the remote radio units will be painted green to match the monopine, provided for aesthetic compatibility and comply with the city's requirements to camouflage the equipment. No special painting or lighting is required by the FFA due to the tower being under two hundred feet. Um, it's also cool, co-locatable, so it promotes future facility and site sharing, no water sewer service is required. And then, once constructed, the facility is unmanned, so it will generate very little traffic, only for maintenance. Um, for the environmental review, we determined that this project is categorically exempt from the CECLAS as an infill development project. They, oh yeah, we have included letters from PG&E just stating that they are reviewing this project, and they've worked with us to make sure compatible uses connectivity near their facilities. So that's one of the blue papers that you received today. And then, we also have another one from the Environmental Corporation of America, just wanting us to provide, um, any comments that we have regarding the effect of the proposed action on any historical properties, which I don't believe this has any historical significance to this area. Um, and then also the other blue, uh, paper is the use permit with the conditions. You guys have any questions?
Uh, not yet, thank you, uh, is there an applicant that wishes to speak on this?
Sure. Adrian?
No, uh, public comment on this?
We have received none.
Um, okay, uh, do commissioners have any questions or comments for staff?
I guess I just have a question on the PG&E letter.
Yeah.
It said that it was, um, uh, you know, concerned about, uh, gas facilities in the, uh, in the area, I mean, if, if they find something, what happens then? Do they get additional conditions on their permit, or? What's the, what happens if they have to change the project because of something that PG&E has in the area?
This, uh, letter, uh, is a generic letter, the email we got from them says that they're still reviewing the project. And, uh, from everything in that letter, it appears that what they're concerned about is any activity within their easements. So, uh, it looks like a generic letter, so, uh, if there's any concerns, then, uh, we'll hear about it and we'll work with the applicant to change the project if necessary.
When we do our, make our ruling, do we have, um, do we have to include that in it, or it's a, that just, is that just something that happens administratively?
Yeah. Uh, in the, in the code, uh, minor changes to a project can be handled at staff level. If anything significant changes, it has to come back to the planning commission, so that's, that's in our code.
I'm guessing that there's probably a big footing for that, and, you know, if there was a gas line, obviously, maybe concerned about that, but, um, Underground Services Association will go out and mark anything, and so it'll be no dig.
Let's try to interpret what I'm reading there, so, thank you.
Uh, if that's it, we're open for motion.
I move to approve item one as stated on the agenda. Second.
Um, please open for voting, like, how do you?
So I can vote for voting, but I'll do a roll call on every single one, and then you guys can just say aye or no. Uh, Commissioner A. Rossi?
Supposed to say, uh, here or yes?
Yes, or no?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Haley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheard?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Jenkins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with two absent.
Okay, well, yes, you can vote here, just vote present, but, uh.
Uh, we will move to item two, staff report.
Um, Connor is supposed to be here, Connor raised his hand.
Okay, I'm gonna give him, is he going to be presenting?
Yes.
Okay, just one moment, Connor, I'm gonna go ahead and promote you to panelist.
We assume Connor, you'll be chairing your screen.
Let's just see one moment, you have to rejoin us. And then, yes. Perfect. You're all set, Connor.
Let me get everything. Hey, so I should be sharing my screen with you guys.
Just taking a moment to look.
There it is.
Jumping around between computers here, so one second, sorry. Okay, so this item before you is a use permit for a proposed Starbucks at twenty forty-third street, this is located at, um, Third and Grand Avenue in the northern area of the city. The, uh, proposal is for a roughly fourteen hundred square foot, uh, Starbucks drive-through only configuration in an existing multi-tenant building, uh, at the, uh, existing gas station, Chevron gas station right there, so the, um, rough history of this is the planning commission approved a use permit, UP thirteen dash zero six, on September twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen, so quite some time ago. The building permits were finalized for the Shell building in two thousand and twenty-one, but full site improvements were never completed, and conditions of approval were not all fully satisfied. So occupancy is now proposed by Starbucks for tenant suite A of the building for a drive-through only establishment. Uh, use permit thirteen dash zero six has since expired, since not all of the conditions of approval were satisfied, and relevant circumstances have changed significantly since the two thousand and thirteen approval, thus necessitating this use permit submittal. So the things that ha- have kind of changed here, we'll start with the site plan, is it's differing from what was initially proposed, so up here at the top, you have what they're proposing now in this submittal, which is, um, showing the drive-through stacking going up to suite A right here to be occupied by Starbucks. Previously, it was shown more, um, instead of going all the way to the eastern of the property, cutting through the top, and the middle suite, suite B, was proposed to be occupied by a Subway sandwich shop. So the drive-through window is proposed to be relocated from suite B to suite A, along with some other minor facade changes that I will dive into here in a second. Um, there were, um, some other minor improvements to the property that are going to be needed, so the driveway widths are gonna have to be completed, new landscaping, uh, on the north and eastern property lines, a seven-foot tall, um, CMU block wall is proposed to be installed to separate especially this eastern end from the neighboring residential property. Um, this slide here shows you kind of just the minor facade change at the front, there was previously a door at this tower-esque location, it's proposed to be moved to where a previous window was, and a window replaced where the door is, and then the drive-through windows, you could see towards the very front of the, um, the building. Back at the, the site plan, so when staff initially reviewed this and the development review committee reviewed this, there were concerns about onsite queuing and onsite circulation, so, um, in your packet, there should be a site plan that kind of shows there is the drive-through stacking kind of running north of the canopy, and then between the commercial building and then overflow stacking running between the convenience store and the car wash, kind of off-screen here for me here, but, um, essentially that would be intended to accommodate any overflow peak time that is, um, anticipated to occur on site. There is a storage.
That's one five in your package.
Thank you, Wes. There is a storage shed kind of, um, between that drive, drive-through or car wash, I apologize, and the, the convenience store, that is proposed to be removed, so that drive aisle will return to a, um, legal two-way traffic flow, uh, a minimum twenty feet. So, so, some other things that, um, staff would like to note is, we are proposing to add a condition of approval, limiting the hours of delivery for, uh, fuel, merchandise, things like that to the site, uh, to roughly correspond to peak, peak traffic times to and from the site, so that would be from seven to ten AM and from three to six PM, Monday through Friday, that corresponds with the, um, you know, work hours of the county, when many people will be coming past the site, and the school start and exit times for the neighboring Thermalito Union School District schools down on Plumas Avenue. Um, another thing to note, right, related application to this, which will be, one of them will be coming before the planning commission at a later date, is the proposed seventy-foot-tall freeway-oriented sign you see here on the left side, and then the wall signage, which will, should this commission approve this, be approved administratively by staff. Um, at this time, we're recommending an adoption of the resolution P two thousand and twenty-four dash zero four, and approving the use permit with the recommended conditions of approval.
The applicant is here, uh, if they would like to make a statement.
Yeah.
It'll pick you up.
Okay. Um, yeah, we appreciate staff working with us on this project, uh, one of the challenges, as Connor pointed out, was the queuing, and so we were able to accommodate queue, extra queuing from the previous two thousand and thirteen plan in the proposed, and then there's emergency queuing onsite that will accommodate more vehicles. And then also on top of that, we're operationally adjusting, so that the, say, refuel, uh, refueling of the underground tanks is not occurring at the same time as when Starbucks is operating at its peak. So that's how we're accommodating this, this project has been going on for a while, and Starbucks is, is expected to, um, enhance the property more.
Yeah.
And also bring more value to the community, so we hope that you would support this, and we have the owner here.
Yeah, no, we just, everybody's been great, and I just really appreciate your time and effort, uh, to make this thing happen, uh, yeah, like I said, well, uh, the fueling is not an issue, I mean, those are basically, we schedule those times, and we want that fuel to be delivered, so we can make that, whatever your guys' proposal is to us, we'll accept, and then we'll just pass it on to our delivery people in Chevron, and we'll just schedule those different, schedule those during those times that you, we are proposing not to deliver, so like I said, we'll accommodate those, those are easy accommodations to fix, you know.
I think with that, if you have any questions for us, we have to answer.
Is the car wash, it's still running?
Yes.
It's active?
Yeah.
So, I'm not totally understanding this. How do you get into the car wash? Are you entering from Grand or from Third?
She's pointing to the, uh, the overflow queue.
Yeah, I'm not really understanding how the car wash is functioning.
The car wash is, uh, so entry is from this side up north, and exit is down south.
So it's right here, it's on Third?
On Third, yeah. So right there.
So the blue are the car wash?
Uh, no, the blue, they could go either to the left.
Blue is just an overflow, overflow vehicles, but the car wash itself goes.
Right there, where that is, okay, so that's a whole separate, and where do they exit?
Out.
They, uh.
Okay, they go where these, those blue cars are, they exit out.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's existing, right?
Yeah.
But that shed is going away, or whatever, it's attached to the main building.
That's just overflow, like, if they, you can drive in between the gas station and the car wash.
But then where do you go if you're driving in between the gas station and the car, from the convenience store and the car wash, if you're driving there, where are you headed? You're leaving, or you're trying to go into the queue?
All those cars are stacked up for Starbucks.
And so even tho- these cars coming by the car wash, they're all going to go this way?
That's the overflow.
Mm-hmm. And the car wash we have, it's, I mean, just to give you an example, it's the, it's not a busy car wash, it's, it's not a, you know, it's, we do about, average about a month, I mean, we were doing like six, seven car washes, eight car washes, it's not a busy car wash.
Oh, yeah, I know, I didn't know.
Yeah, so it's not like it's, like you're running cars, through there a lot of cars, I mean, I ran the numbers and stuff through the last meeting, so, and that was one other thing, is we made two driveways for that, that we separated it.
Right.
To for the.
Car wash and that. And then the Starbucks.
The where Connor has his mouse, that's where you actually enter into the.
Drive-through.
Drive-through.
Right.
That, that allows twelve cars.
Yes.
And then the blue cars are overflow in case, uh, during peak hours, uh, you need that space. And then, uh, I'm presuming that operationally, they're gonna put somebody there to help control traffic.
That's the part I didn't get.
And that, that area that's crosshatched there, uh, cars should not stop there, there, that'll be, uh, marked, if you don't stop there, so that you can actually go in and out of the parking spaces that are just immediately to the north there, so the traffic is, is not impeded. And those overflow times will occur probably, uh, eight to eight-thirty in the morning, and, uh, maybe another time in the afternoon. We've been monitoring the Starbucks two that's over at, uh, uh, yeah, or, no, Oro Dam from Lower Wyandotte and Olive Highway. And at eight-thirty, you get about twelve or thirteen cars there, and it does back up a little bit onto, uh, Wyandotte, or, uh, Lower Wyandotte, uh, but it's not too bad, uh, and the road is wide enough so the cars can get by, so that's, that's what the engineer planned it, so we'll get about twelve to fifteen cars probably at peak. Uh, a lot more at first, I mean, when, when, uh, uh, Kentucky Fried Chicken opened, uh, there were cars going out onto, uh, onto Oro Dam Boulevard, but right now, you never have more than three or four cars there, so it's just a, it's a matter of, of getting operationally understood, so anybody that goes to this twice will know the drill.
Okay.
Uh, will there be, uh, paint or signage, uh, showing the overflow, or you just think there'll be staff out there kind of directing?
It'll be staff, because this is temporary, right, it's just for the peak hours, so if we show signage, it might be confusing, or the permanent signage might be confusing.
Yeah, I just, that sounds confusing right now, so I imagine people driving through your parking lot aren't gonna know.
And they haven't had coffee yet, so they're.
Connor, is your brother still a barista at Starbucks number two?
No, he's a barista at Los Angeles number one.
So you guys decided to make it a drive-through only, because I think at the DRC meeting, it was gonna be in side and then plus drive-through, but now it's just drive-through?
Uh.
Am I correct?
There is some seating inside, but.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
It was, something said drive-through only, I was wondering that too.
Okay.
So you can go inside.
Okay.
Because there's parking here and pressure here.
There'll be more than parking in there, yeah, there is.
Yeah.
It's inside too, that's why it's about uh, fourteen hundred some square.
Yeah, it's a nice space.
Okay, just making sure.
Do we have any more questions or comments? Um, was there any, uh, public comment on this item?
None, I think.
Uh, we're open for motion, there's no more questions or comments.
Well, I have a question, what the other two, uh, spaces there? Do you have any tenants for those two spaces?
Not right now, so there would be like, if anything, if, uh, you know, obviously, hey, I gotta get approval from Starbucks, I mean, they're gonna, they're not gonna get anybody competitive, or like that, it'd be more, if I do something for, like, the nice part about the whole thing is, I am the owner of the gas station, I'm gonna be the other part too, so I will, you know, obviously, it's gonna have to come back to you guys for another approval, whatever comes through here, so then we'll deal with that one back time coming, if it is something I have to put in there, then I'll just do it, it'd be my business, it will, either I make it or I don't make it, it's my loss, you know what I mean, so my big thing right now is just getting this thing done, because obviously, I've invested so much money and time into this thing, and loans to everything, I just need your guys' help with this, and plus, I think it, it can really benefit the city and myself, you know.
Well, I agree, it's been driving me nuts, that building.
The food. Yeah. Food truck is gone.
Okay.
And then also, we, I think we proposed, we're getting the, there's a container, and there's another building that, that's, uh, not permitted, so we're removing that.
Oh, that outdoor container?
Yeah. We're cleaning it, so, so we're just gonna make the whole place, and then, then we have some other, you know, to make it a little nicer, to a little other stuff, meaning after this is done, pave and stuff, is it start, I mean, Chevron is gonna give us a little bit more funds to do a little bit more, to make the place more, uh, nice to have the asphalt done and stuff like that. So, I mean, they're looking forward to that, obviously enhances their fuel, enhances the sales for them, so it's a win-win situation for everybody if you look at the end game, you know.
My only concern with it, you know, I thought it was a drive-through only, is with Starbucks number two on Lower Wyandotte, this is zoo. Trying to go inside and park, the parking spaces are really small, people coming in, you can't make the turn, um, people block the intersection all the time.
We talked about that in design review, and I expressed that same concern.
On, on this one, or the previous?
This one here. We went through quite a bit of conversation about how that might be mitigated, I think that the twenty-two cars that they have on the site now, twelve in queue, and then ten more that go into the two other lanes, probably should take care of it.
Yeah, no.
You can also park across the street.
Yeah, that was.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, this is clearly, you know, the best drive-through that I've seen out of the Starbucks in town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I just wanted to make sure that there's, you know, if there's gonna be, you know, these guys coming in, people trying to come in and back out, that, and then with the gas station traffic, it's not gonna be
actually, you know.
Compatible with car fueling everywhere.
Yeah, even the, sort of, this, this Chevron fuel, actually, you know, they're, they're high premium, I mean, the customers that we have, I mean, we do like sixty thousand gallons, we don't do three hundred thousand gallons there. So I mean, I will expect the gallons will go up, but as of right now, I mean, our volume is, is under sixty thousand. So as the fuel proportion we're talking about, it's not that much. So I just wanna make sure, like, some gas stations, I mean, they do pump three hundred thousand gallons or two hundred fifty, that can be, it could be an issue, but I think with our station, I mean, obviously, with the flow of Starbucks coming in there, then we're gonna have more fuel gallons go up, but maybe the same customer that wanna get fuel up and get Starbucks.
Sure.
But I think, on the other hand, but the, the traffic of the people coming in for the fuel is, I mean, I brought the numbers, I could share the numbers with you guys, the volume that we have is not that much there compared to other stations, because this is Chevron, you know, only select the people that come and get, um, Chevron fuel.
Right.
And I will note, the first Starbucks has a drive-through queuing length to accommodate eight vehicles. The second Starbucks has a drive-through queuing length to accommodate ten vehicles, and much of that overflow would spill back onto the public right away, so this Starbucks would have two more plus substantial more onsite spill-back queuing before it reaches any roadway. Um, part of the reasoning why, uh, we're looking at removing these storage containers and some of the other containers on site is to improve that two-way traffic flow on the property, so instead of having to leave to get to the south side, it should all be self-contained, and then with the conditions to limit the fueling and merchandise delivery, um, help prevent any blockage of the drive-through queuing aisle to prevent spill-back and congestion on the site. If it does become an issue, um, condition of approval has been added to have Starbucks staff or, uh, the applicant to employ traffic control measures, um, order runners, things like that, you would typically see at Dutch Bros, and, um, we would be able to evaluate those for success.
On, on the motion of this, does it need to have a condition, uh, uh, added of the, uh, delivery hours, or is that part of the?
That has already been added.
Okay, so just motion, motion as a, as agenda decides, man. Covering it all. We will open to a motion.
Make a motion that we approve item two as agenda decides.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, roll, call voting, please.
Commissioner A. Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sheard?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Jenkins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you for doing it. Great building.
Any more questions for staff, or?
No, I just wanted to thank you guys for all the guys' time.
I'll be there for help.
Yes. Yeah, we'll, that's what I wanna do, make sure that place gets cleaned up, I mean, it's a, it's an image for the city and image for my business, it adds value, you know, that's the key for the whole project, I know, and I apologize, it's taken so long, but there's a reason for everything, I, you know, I think this was what it was meant for, you know, not, not subway, you know, so.
Yes, I agree. Good use.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Eric.
We'll move to item number three, staff report, please.
Yes, Brandon will be presenting this, um, item.
Hi, can everyone hear me well?
Yeah.
We don't hear you.
I can't see you.
Okay, let me put my video on real quick, give me one second, please. Hi. Uh, my light bulb just went out in my room today, actually, so I have to deal with my little ring light. But it's nice to meet everyone, good evening, commissioners.
That's awful convenient.
Right, um, I think this is the first time meeting all of you, uh, for the first time. Uh, my name is Brandon Mata, planning intern with, uh, City of Orville. This item concerns a subdivision located at seven one-one Montgomery Street, between Sixth and Seventh Avenues, identified as APN zero one two zero six four zero zero one. The Orville City Council approved tentative subdivision map TSM two zero dash zero two back in two thousand and twenty-one. The project involves twelve two-story, single-family homes on zero point six-four acres. An approved tentative subdivision map expires after a three-year period. Uh, Orville City Ordinance allows two-year extensions up to a six-year maximum. And this is the first extension the applicant has requested. Uh, staff is recommending a two-year extension to allow the applicant time to develop. Uh, we did adopt a notice of exemption back in two thousand and twenty-one, and no circumstances have changed with respect to the city's general plan or their conditions. The applicant is here via Zoom for any additional questions or comments, and again, staff is recommending a two-year extension, thank you.
Thank you, uh, would the applicant like to speak on this?
Uh, yes, uh, my name is Brad Long, I'm the Executive Director of the Veterans Housing Development Corporation, and, um, we.
And um we uh feel very strongly uh about this project. Uh veterans uh who have been heavily impacted by both the um camp and the car fires and uh other. Housing situations um throughout the the uh our northern California region uh between economics and other situations. Um we feel that this is an optimal situation for those veterans that are are searching for. Long-term uh ownership in in housing. And uh what I'd like to address is uh the delays in this project. Is uh directly um concerning how we originally had worked with our. Um the financing um group that we were working with was CalVet. Uh they do uh. Low interest rate loans for veterans getting into their their first housing. And that requirement was that uh we pre-sell. Uh the units and what we found in this very strong feedback from veterans who are interested because we do have. A sign on site and we do active outreach um throughout the catch basin. With all the uh veterans that we interact with on this. And the strong feedback we got is that um. I'm I'm buying into an idea. I can't, I can't imagine this. I can't figure it. There's no building there for me to see. Now, we're also working with the City of Orville on uh rehabilitating uh rehabbing uh multiple houses. That had been uh uh foreclosed by the city and. Um for example, our uh the Baldwin, we're working on the Baldwin uh Baldwin property right now, which was. Um uh fire-damaged property. And the veteran said, I will take that over this Montgomery Street because I could see what you can do here, even though it was it was fire damaged. And so we currently have that undergoing rehab and we have the veteran uh ready to to purchase that, so. That being said, uh we decided that, okay, without at least building one set of these. Um we we're having a hard time pre-selling them. And so we have decided to look at VA construction loans and also work with our current. Uh banking institution, Bank of America. We're just, our idea now is just take out a a construction loan. Build one set of these and then we should be able to sell uh the rest of them from there. So we're looking at um third quarter of this year. Um uh well, July timeframe. Secure the financing, uh get into the ground and get construction going at least by the end of the third quarter. Uh to have one set of these built and then we should be able to sell the rest of them. Once, once the veteran can see what these are. We've had a lot of interest in them. Um but it is, it's hard to sell something that does not exist. So we're taking a completely different track on this. And uh we we are heavily invested in this because it is a a Vanguard. Idea for the veterans. Uh there's only one other of these projects that has been done in Southern California. And it was very successful. And so we're looking forward to it and and we really appreciate. Uh that the commission is taking into consideration the extension on this because we believe we now have a working plan to move forward. And if you have any other questions, please feel free um to uh let me know.
Thank you. Uh do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
Uh what what's your price point?
These uh well, two, three years ago when we're looking at, we're looking at like two hundred eighty thousand.
I mean, it it appears that you're not gonna be able to build them for that.
Um no, now we're gonna have to go out and rebid now because obviously those prices have changed.
Yeah, I mean, with interest rates and fire insurance and what have you, I mean, um I don't know if it's even doable.
Fire, fire insurance has been strange at best, as you all know. Um however, we 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 do know we're starting to see some materials stabilizations throughout the market. Um lumber was was huge, a huge problem. Electrical and supply chain issues have also been a huge problem with our other projects. But um we do feel that um we do a construction loan and then we flip over to a a VA loan. We would do a federal VA loan which has lower percentage rate for it.
And uh is there gonna be an HOA?
Yes.
How many, you don't know what that's gonna be?
Uh the HOA was. When we last looked at this, it was about, I believe, about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month.
And what's the CalVet financing right now?
CalVet financing is about six and a quarter.
Okay. And that's a no money down, right, for the VET?
Yes.
Um I have a question. If you build the first three. What happens if you can't sell the other nine? And how much time do they have to get them all built? Like, is there any kind of a timeframe like that or?
I'm sorry, we'd take it a construction loan for the first three, definitely sell out the first three. And then, of course, then roll any proceeds and secure another, another uh construction loan to build the next. Set of three.
From a regulatory uh perspective, uh before they build the first three, the first unit. Uh they will have to have a final map uh submitted and approved uh by the engineering division here. Uh once that is approved, uh then actually they can take forever to build the rest if legally, so. But they have to get the map approved uh before April eighth, twenty twenty six.
Yeah, and that and that would not be our plan. We would want to build them out as quickly as possible. We know that with the first three built. We uh we would definitely garner interest in the uh next, the next sets that need to be built after that. Um so we would, we would definitely build them out as quickly as we could process it through.
Mostly uh square foot of each unit.
They're nice.
I don't have that readily available to me right now.
But I know two, three bedrooms are on the end and then the two bedrooms in the middle.
Yeah.
Do you know where you'd start? I guess it doesn't matter.
We we would start on the western end.
Okay, the three bedroom is fourteen eighty-nine and the two bedroom is twelve fifty-two.
Nice.
Thank you. Um and as I recall, I believe we have the utilities uh running. Initially into the property from the Seventh Avenue side.
So the first three units would be built across the street from the Cow Water facility. Um and across Montgomery from the uh vacant lot that's there.
Oh, yes, across the Cow Water, Valero Cow Water. Okay, that's why you do it. That would be good. We need buildings there.
Yes. Uh Wes, he's have to have solar too, correct?
Yes, that's state law.
No, I think it's, I like to see it built.
Yeah, I'd like to see it built. It's a sketchy area right now. And it will be fully fenced and have an HOA.
Yep.
Be fully landscaped.
That fence is uh four feet. Per the uh approval of the city council.
Yep.
And is it right on the sidewalk like that or does it have to go?
On the sidewalk.
Right, so it's not the, I thought we had a, not that I didn't mind that, but I thought we had a code where you had to go back. Um from the sidewalk, like two and a half feet.
Oh.
We'll check into that, but this is a visible fence you can see through.
Yeah.
So I I don't believe we have to uh set it then. Connor, do you recall? You guys do get that fence ordinance for us?
Maybe because it's in the front, you don't have. No?
Um if it's over forty-two inches to a maximum height of seven feet. It must be placed at least five feet behind the property line and landscaped in the setback area.
But there's also a sidewalk there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For gutter sidewalk, that'll be great.
So. And that's the meander, is that a meandering sidewalk that was supposed to be proposed there? It's a new one, right?
In the back, in the back of it is, it's it's a meandering walkway, as you know, because of the offsets of the units.
Yeah.
The front is 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 pretty much straight walk through.
It's like they're detached sidewalks too, though they're not.
Yeah.
Here's the sidewalk here.
Yeah.
And then this is a uh bio-sway here.
Yep. Yep.
Without an alley way be used, there's there's a just an alley like that, right?
The cars will be uh driving into their garages from the alley.
Would the alley be paved then at that point?
Yes.
The only other question I have, it's probably not of the applicant, but on page one eighty-six of our packets. Item two, it says it's twenty dwelling units. Or is that just the density? Like, I just wanna confirm, it is just twelve?
It's just twelve.
Okay. I guess it could be twenty. Maybe that. Okay, okay.
Is it probably less than an acre?
I think it is less than an acre.
Yeah, the, there will be twelve units at a density of twenty.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Open for motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that. We approve. Resolution P two zero two four dash zero three.
Do we have a second? Hell, second. Uh please call Ralph for voting.
Commissioner Rocky?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheered?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Vice Chair person Jenkins?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
And thank you, Brandon, for writing this staff report on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We'll see you next time.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, we will move to commissioner reports. Do we have any commissioner reports? Uh historical advisory commission reports.
Yes, I'm trying to get the screen.
Don't worry.
Staff report.
We do have staff reports, I think, so.
Okay, um the Public Works Division is planning to shed light. On the existing Liberty Pole, uh that is at the corner of Montgomery and Antune. Uh and it's at the corner of our lot A. As you can see, our lot A is behind there. The Liberty Pole extends well above the trees there. Uh it's been there for a while. And uh the. Our community development director, Fred Mayo, who would be here tonight except he's conducting another workshop. Um is proposing to put a light on the existing light uh streetlight that's there. Across the street and to illuminate that the top one-third of that Liberty Pole. So that there can be a flag on that pole uh day and night. And uh the light will be angled and uh designed such. That it will, it will shoot upward. Uh and and be targeted focused so that it it just lights the flag, doesn't illuminate anything else. And doesn't bother uh any persons uh anywhere in any buildings. So uh we have brought this to the Historic Advisory Commission more as a courtesy for a report. I don't believe we need an approval. From you folks uh for this. Uh so it's just uh to make sure that that the Historic Advisory Commission understands and knows that. This will will be happening be before two.
And then the flag will be there all the time? Is that the goal?
That's the goal.
That's wonderful.
So the light won't be visible from the apartments that are cutting corner to that?
That's what I was wondering.
Uh that's correct.
It must really.
I don't know.
It must really go.
Yeah, I don't know how.
It would be direct.
I think maybe. That's a question for the engineer, I guess. He's not here, but uh.
There's two apartments, I think.
I think that the idea is it'll be shaded as the light.
Like the light's recessed with that, with that, with that, something like, almost like a.
Focuses it over that direction, but obviously the flag will be illuminated because that's the purpose of the light.
So number three on the uh the email that's attached to that. There's a floodlight will have a shroud installed to focus beam at Liberty Pole. Uh attached photo, and Fred was apologized ever since the photo, uh he tried very hard, but uh. It's not exactly to his liking, but it'll it'll illuminate the top one-third of it.
It it's just fantastic when the flag is there. It's wonderful. Um so who's in charge of that? That becomes something the city is then in charge of making sure the flag is taken care of and all of that? It's a Fred thing. He's in charge of all the flags. Okay.
At least that one.
Okay. That's wonderful.
We still in staff reports now?
We are. That was actually item four, so we're still on item three.
Okay, well, Noel has something for item three.
For the historic preservation award, we have a little update. We did some, uh we had three nominations come in. We completed the judging and the award will be given out at the, we'll make, we'll make the announcement at the uh State of the City in April. And we still have to design the plaque and get that, I mean, so there's more steps we have to do, but. Very excited about it.
And uh. We will make sure that the Planning Commission or the Historic Advisory Commission knows who the awardees are prior to the State of the City, so.
Yeah.
You'll be informed properly.
And um like, we do have two sponsors, which we gotta acknowledge, Orville Hospital and um we're working on.
I'm working on. We can't say that I have them. I'm working on them. Oh, you have another one?
Golden Valley Bank. I don't think we have.
Oh, okay. So we're still, we're on that, but Orville, Orville Hospital is.
It'd be good for a real estate office. You get a lot of notoriety, you have events, you're listed. It would be fantastic. I think we can work up some more sponsorships. Um. I don't know if this is the time, it's not really a commissioner report, but the meeting that's going on that Fred is doing. I kind of would have liked to have been there and known about it.
It was scheduled um. Before our Planning Commission meeting last week had to be canceled, so. We we unfortunately have a conflict. There will be more public meetings on that same topic, so you'll be able to hear the presentation. In way in. Uh there'll be about three or four different.
What does that meaning for? The table mountain.
Is it possible, is it possible to get a presentation on that to us at our next meeting? Then we wouldn't.
There'll be another workshop on March twelfth, is that right?
Sounds right.
And how are we notified?
The paper date last time wasn't right, so.
So he's doing door-to-door right now and handing out letters for people in the area that.
That's smart.
He's reaching out that way. And so uh there was not a favor regarding it this time down, but I'll work with him next time.
And I think, you know, as as a planning commission, I think we would like to get notified ourselves about any meetings that happen from the city. To get those schedules, uh that would be helpful. It just, it just helps us learn more about what's going on in the city, about what. People in neighborhoods are thinking about projects that we're thinking about in the city because those are things we need to know about.
So the the current website has an option for someone to. So the, the current website has an option for someone to sign up, they were different notices.
Yeah, no.
It's working, yep.
It's working.
It is working.
I get notices for city council and planning commission, but I didn't know there was anything else.
But there should be a box on there to check where it says other, and then it says um, it'll say others, it'll say like agendas and minutes, or it'll say other events, community events is one. So if you put the community events one, anytime there's like one of those happening.
Check that out.
Then we'll send that, but also we'll just, I'll do a better job next time too, uh I'll work with them to make sure that works.
And if you check on multiple things. It goes out to most to each of the groups, you'll still only get one.
It sounds like there's in- interest from everybody about hearing, hearing about like that, though.
We'll, we'll ask if they will do that. It's more interest here than there was to people that came to the meeting, and I, they only had two.
Oh, I, I didn't know, I didn't know a lot of other than. And they hadn't heard about it either, so.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a streetscape proposed for improving Washington Street between the roundabout at Montgomery. And uh highway one sixty-two. So that would be streetscape and sidewalk and bike lanes.
Yeah, it's big.
Parking and bullbouts and, and a whole, and crossings and such, so there's a whole lot of stuff that would happen.
Because traffic there, if you try to leave like uh, like the bulldog.
Yeah.
You know, on that little side street right now, I don't know what street that is. There's a vacant lot, and then you have that little s- small street. It's like playing Frogger, trying to get across, and then it gets hard to come over the bridge, and they come from the roundabout. It, it takes a long time to cross that. I'm not sure what they're doing with the roundabout, but there is something to sort of calm the traffic that's, that's going through the roundabout, making it easier to go through. And then, as Wes said, it's bike lanes, sidewalks, all the way from there to one sixty-two, so it helps bring. Uh mobility from that area.
Yeah, and see, one of the things I'd like to do is bring that uh particularly bicycle connectivity into downtown from there. Maybe branching off of that, that's something we'll talk about, probably going forward, that's what, you know, with the uh presentation, bike presentation that I have, that I still haven't delivered to. Commission yet, um you know, I'd like to revise that and bring that to commission also, and then, you know, wrapping around. Some of your traffic calming things.
Traffic calming on Montgomery.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think you're gonna see, honestly. It, it appears that within the last six months or. So traffic on Oro Dam has gotten hairball. Um and especially. Oro Dam and Olive Highway is, is, is nuts. So you're gonna see more people start driving on Montgomery. Doing whatever they can do to avoid.
Well, I've done it already.
And.
I know, and that's a residential.
To be, I don't know if this is the time to talk about it, but it's one of my biggest pet peeves is. Traffic and traffic signals and timing of them. You know, on Olive Highway at the AMPM right there, when you're making a left or a right from. Oro Dam onto Olive Highway. You got people blocking the intersection now. You know, those lights, the lights. That light at Oro Dam, the light that goes into the hospital or the Crystal Pharmacy. And the light at Lower Windout, they should all be timed. To be green all at one time, so it flows, because you get.
I don't know if they're doing that as part of the, of that one sixty-two project or not, but I'm sure that they are gonna be. Looking at that when this thing's all over.
I don't know how much longer, I mean, that can go on then with, again. I know people will disagree with me, but that Starbucks. In the morning, you got people making a right and trying to turn left into the Starbucks driveway, you got guys coming down Lower Windot, blocking that driveway. It's a mess.
That's why we had the full conversation at the DRC about the Star, with the Starbucks guy.
Should be a, a keep clear zone in front of that driveway. Going into Starbucks.
What uh we have uh noted the Planning Commission's desire to have this presentation at the next meeting.
And be able to talk with Fred about other things.
Other things.
Thank you.
You can have all kinds of stuff, right?
Okay, yeah, that's the civics one oh one, well then we could bring up anything.
Only three of us could attend, right?
Oh.
I don't.
Can we go every other?
Yeah, but Fred's only doing one and Patrick's only doing.
Oh, I see, okay.
This one oh one is all about business. So continuing with the staff report.
We just need Fred to come here, so it's a public meeting, and then we don't have to worry about that, and then we can ask all the questions.
Perfect.
We need a whole day, a whole meeting with Fred.
On January fifteenth, staff issued an RFQ for the marketing of Orovale. Ongoing uh what used to be called branding, but no longer is, it's now marketing. Uh we received fifteen proposals as of last Friday, and. Pat is overseeing uh with the uh. Working Committee. Uh the Creative Committee. Uh the evaluation of all fifteen of these. And uh focusing them down so we can make a coherent recommendation to the city council. In the. Maybe late March. The Alfresco Dining Ordinance has become law. Uh the oak tree mitigation ordinance, uh council kicked it back. For more discussion, uh and to get modified to add different tree species on there, and Connor is, is. Uh working with Wade, our uh streets and uh arborist. To modify that and then take it back to council prior to Arbor Day. Connor, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, what tree species?
There are so many trees, um I don't know. The main thing that we're focusing on are exemptions for permits, so currently if you look at our, our permit requirements for. Standard trees, not just oak trees, but just standard trees. It, it reads as you are required to get a permit for pruning, trimming, maintenance, removal of a dead or any kind of tree. So we're trying to set similar exceptions to what we did for the oak tree ordinance. Um setting, you know, if your tree is dead or dying, it was a danger to public health, safety, you don't need to come in and get a permit for that. Um the council and the mayor did express some specific tree species that they wanted to see exempted from permit requirements, so the removal of a eucalyptus tree. Not requiring a permit for that, and the removal of a palm tree, not requiring a permit for that. I have looked at some other jurisdictions and, you know, potentially what we'd be looking at too are, are, you know. Ornamental trees or um uh crop trees, so. If you have a, an orange tree in your yard and you planted that. That doesn't really have a value to us, you should be able to remove that without coming in for a permit, and. That would hopefully smooth things over a little bit. I did a, a deep dive into our general plan. We don't care about non-native trees, well, we do care, but we don't care in policy format of non-native trees, so. We shouldn't be running into too many issues from a um, a, a sequoia standpoint on those.
Another ordinance, the food truck village ordinance uh was uh kicked back. To uh staff to do more study on how many trucks there are on Oro Dam Boulevard and on Olive Highway. Well, we've done that survey, uh and the idea is to possibly recommend limits to the number of trucks that. That would go along there. That is uh well-known as our. Fast food corridor, and so the Taco Bell and others uh don't want. Uh just a, a bunch of, of competition to spring up. Uh so uh that's what we're doing. Uh we'll be taking that back to council, hopefully on March nineteenth for the second reading. Uh with proposed modifications to the. So there've been a lot of discussions about these ordinances um at council, a lot more. Public input than this planning commission has received. So I'd like to make a personal comment about that. Those ordinances endured a significant discussion by council, but it was in a large part because of public input. Very few people seem to monitor or attend planning commission meetings. By contrast, and that's where I think uh that the questions that are being addressed by council should be raised and addressed. And dealt with uh prior to going to council. Uh the Planning Commission is the second most important body uh in the city or in any city. Because you guys make uh real project decisions and decisions about future development. Uh so. When I got here four years ago, the Planning Commission had very little respect from the then council. Um and that was. Potent. Now, uh. The decisions that have been made, I think there's, the respect has increased, but I still think uh that this. Commission needs to get a lot more respect from the citizens. I don't know what we can do really, other than publicize. Uh get, get everybody on these email blasts, uh invite people that we know might be interested in these topics to the meetings, et cetera. Another thing. That staff is supposed to make an annual progress report on the general plan to the commission and to the council. Uh every year in April. Um because of staff capacity issues, ever since the general plan was. Adopted in two thousand fifteen, there's never been a report on the state of our general plan presented. Uh we shall endeavor to do so this year. We'll try and get it done in April, but no promises, but it's, it's high time to get a, a report to the public. On the state of the general plan. So moving forward, uh we'll be thinking about those other things. So thank you for allowing me this personal comment.
So you're telling us to try, we need to somehow be more aggressive about bringing up when these ordinances come to us. All the different sides, all the different facets.
You, I think you already do a really good job.
Because that's what's hard.
He's talking about.
Need to get more people to.
They're never gonna come.
You know, I, I, it's hard making policy for a city when the city doesn't come.
Right. But we can tell people, I've done that before in the past, when I see something, I'll just tell some neighbors or people who I think might be interested to try to get them to come. Or at least tell me what they think. But that's a good point.
At our Realtor meetings, we have weekly Realtor meetings, so like, they're on Thursdays too, so like last Thursday morning, I said, oh, this is what we're gonna be discussing tonight at the planning commission meeting.
Yes.
Then I got postponed, but still, I like to bring it up to them.
Yeah.
With the local paper, they report on the planning commission in Chico. And they certainly get, get lively meetings there. I haven't seen, I haven't seen anything on the uh, in, in the county. About the Orville Planning Commission, I started subscribing about a year ago, and. I don't think I've seen a single mention.
I think Kara would totally write that.
Because if we have these ordinances coming up, I would think that that would be a decent news article that we're gonna be talking about this.
Just go on the Orville Rants and Raves.
Oh, no.
We should adjourn the meeting before we.
That's the downside.
Like, agreed.
What, what were some of council's uh? Comments on the food truck?
It wasn't the council, it was, it was uh. Uh community members.
What was some of their? I mean, are, are, are those questions, things that we had discussed that we brought up?
It was the Taco Bell person came and they talked about what Wes was saying, that they. They just don't want the competition of people that don't have to pay large sums.
We did talk about that, a lot. We were very concerned, we're very concerned about the competition.
That's why I think the, that area by Home Depot. Is far enough away from any fast food or anybody.
That's another recommendation we're supposed to make as, as to where we think food truck villages uh might be allowed to.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we tried.
So uh, God, you just say you had a couple of things. The DRC meeting will be March fourteenth, the next DRC. And there's four items so far on the agenda. Uh Starbucks number three. The sign permit is coming before the DRC and then the planning commission. Our code authorizes up to forty feet where Ed Grand there and uh. Uh the Chevron station, there is a forty-foot sign there now. They have done the drive-through, drive-bys and everything, and they're going to propose a seventy-foot sign. For visibility from uh northbound highway seventy, so that someone can see that sign prior to passing the off-ramp.
Wow.
Uh so that's uh what we'll hear about, we haven't done an analysis of it ourselves yet. But uh that will come up. This, and Connor, are you still here?
Yeah.
So Connor and I had a quickie discussion about maybe uh amending the sign ordinance a bit, did you wanna talk about that a bit?
Yes, did. Um so a- as some of you who are on the commission, I think all of you are on the commission except Warren, but. We did a comprehensive sign code update adopted back in two thousand twenty-one, um that was six years in the making, I believe. And, and part of that, we. We, I say we, a royal we, the Planning Commission and the City Council uh approved the ordinance. Limiting super tall signs, so where we currently see the eighty-five foot tall signs uh at Oro Dam and Feather River Boulevard. Essentially, the code limits those signs that you see to that exact area, they're not allowed anywhere else within the city. Except that off-ramp ends on Oro Dam. Our code regulations allow a freestanding sign at a maximum height of eight feet tall. Or up to forty feet tall if you're along Oro Dam Boulevard. Or up to eighty-five feet tall as approved by the Planning Commission. So essentially what we ended up creating was. A bunch of non-conforming signs throughout the city, and we've received a variance application for the new tractor supply. We've received this use permit submittal for the Starbucks number three. Part of the risk that comes with that, and I say risk in terms of quality development, is we don't have any development standards. For signs of those natures, so if an individual were to come along and request that variance, they're requesting to do so under. Essentially their own design, and it's up to the Planning Commission to. Hash it out and work it out and approve the sign as they're proposing, so. In my quick conversation with Wes, I was toying back and forth and kind of wanted to get a feeling of the Planning Commission if. We're open to amending the sign code again to kind of set a new regulation for freeway-oriented freestanding signs, so. Uh increasing that height a little bit, setting some more stringent development standards, like pole cladding, uh size requirements, things like that. For consideration, and so I will note the eight-foot tall. Freestanding sign height is throughout the city, the eight feet is the exact same height that you're allowed to have a monument sign. So there's essentially no difference in height between the two signs, but you can have a wall sign up to a height of twenty feet. So you can build a wall up to the maximum height of the zoning district regulations and throw a sign twenty feet up on that. But you can't have a freestanding sign, so um just proposing to draft up some changes and run them by you guys if, if we're. Amiable to that idea.
Yeah, I think it'd be great.
Some of the active projects we have are this uh Starbucks at the Grand and uh. Highway seventy where they want seventy feet. Um we have a new sign uh application that's just come in to convert the. Uh gas station that's by. Cornucopia. That one, which is an off-brand right now, uh that's gonna be converted to a Chevron. And they want to raise their pole sign that's there on the corner, thirty feet. Uh that is not a freeway-oriented sign, they have another freeway-oriented sign already. Uh and then we've had inquiries, active inquiries about Garden Highway and seventy. The very north edge of town, which is zoned highway commercial. And uh. The gentleman who I talked to yesterday wants to have a seventy or eighty-five foot sign. So that his gas station can be seen for miles, especially from the north. So these are, are some of the potential applications uh that we might see. Uh and, and so I think Connor, an idea about maybe revisiting freeway-oriented sign. Regulations uh is probably a good one at this point.
Yeah, it seems to me the uh primary consideration is gonna be establishing some sort of consistency and how they. Look and such, right? I can't believe it wasn't gone over. Seems like we went over every aspect of.
Come on, you guys.
I, I, I know in the past and probably currently uh. Uh the commission hasn't been too crazy about variances, so I think getting it taken care of would be a good idea.
Okay, well, there, there was, there will be a variance included in this Starbucks sign. Uh project is what.
Does it need to be seventy feet tall? Does it need to be seventy feet tall?
If it is to be seen from the freeway, yes. Currently, this the Chevron station is not, cannot be seen from the freeway.
Yeah, how tall is it now?
How tall is it now?
Forty feet.
Forty, that's what.
Forty feet tall now, and that's a, and that's a the freeway's lowered there, right?
Yes. So. So the question is whether this planning commission will uh care whether the this new Starbucks and the upgraded Chevron station warrants getting freeway exposure.
So you you can't see a forty-foot sign from the freeway?
You wouldn't, because there's a hill right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did the flag test. There's a lot of trees, including visibility there.
So how tall does it need to be to be seen?
Seventy feet.
So which side of the street? Maybe we can all do a drive-by.
No, I I'm just asking.
Where are they gonna be, like in front of the Chevron on that side?
They're gonna move it to the corner of the building, yeah.
Okay, on Third and Grand?
Yeah. So uh uh that's just for your future consideration and the DRC as.
Well, I I mean, I think it needs to just be uniform. If there's a seventy, then I say that's the highest.
So that is something that the planning commission will need to take into consideration when we come back with that use permit is you will essentially be doing what you did with McDonald's back in twenty twelve, setting a precedence of what signs you want to allow moving forward. And so the general benchmark that this commission and the city has stuck to is we're going no higher than eighty-five feet. And part of the change in twenty twenty one was we limited that to the Oro Dam and Feather River Boulevard off-ramp. This would be the first super tall sign, quote-unquote, outside of that area requesting variance.
Do we have?
Like a monopine, they could be.
Yeah. Do do we have the ability to, you know, instead of setting the standard at a certain high, to set the standard at a certain visibility from a certain distance along from the freeway? Because we have those hills, like that hill with the Grand Avenue overpass, but over on Garden Highway. Yeah, you know, you could see everything there ever, and so.
Uh there is also a a proposal to uh put a higher sign, higher uh freestanding sign at the uh tractor supply as well, and uh they're they're applying for a variance, so.
Will that be at the DRC meeting?
Uh. Yes.
Okay.
And then Walmart will want their sign.
What's the reason for for wanting up? I mean, that's pretty much a destination that you're going to.
Supply.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like, oh, my God, let's stop the tractor supply while we're driving by.
The the Revi sign, the Taco Bell sign, the Walmart sign.
Okay, well, then they're all gonna bring people there and then there's tractor supply.
So anyway, that.
I mean, I don't know.
I do wanna hate uh uh speaking a personal belief of mine in terms of that, but since Wes spoke a personal opinion or statement of his, I feel like I can. I per- personally, with the the variance application for tractor supply, it it will be a difficult staff report to write because they're requesting that a hardship be found for their property, that they are not sharing a right found by their neighboring property owners with the tall signs. Those signs were permitted as legal non-conforming because we have changed our code. So they are requesting a variance for signage that has now been deemed legal non-conforming. Therefore, that hardship is a quasi hardship. Planning Commission legally created those signs and allow them to go in, and then we said we're not allowing them to occur anymore. So that's a difficulty that staff is having to deal with is the constant finger pointing is so-and-so has a sign I wanna sign. I will also note that it is a Caltrans policy that they will not cut trees for signage and advertisement. So as the trees continue to grow on seventy, will we continue to see individuals wanting taller and taller signs? That is probably the case, but that is something for this commission to consider. I did look at the city of Chico's regulations, which we kind of copied in our sign code. And they do set twenty feet as the maximum height for freeway-oriented signs, but they have a more liberal planned sign program code section that allows the planning commission to exercise their discretion in the types of signs and designs that they would like to see. So the Chico Marketplace sign that you see uh facing uh State Route ninety-nine, that is at a height of fifty-seven feet tall. But that was approved through a comprehensive sign program for the Chico Mall. So that's kind of the difference between our our issues that we're running into and what Chico has with their sign ordinance is they've given more discretion to the planning commission and freedom to authorize those increased heights at a I wouldn't say loss, but a compromise that if they have higher quality design.
Then there's one other approach that might affect uh revising the sign ordinance. That is that uh we will approach Caltrans to see what it would take to get one of those freeway sign programs going, so that when you're approaching an off-ramp, you see all the logos of all of the businesses that are there.
Yeah, yes.
They do that in other states, they do that in other cities, so we're gonna look at the requirements for that.
That'd be great.
Which may
Yeah.
shake, you know, affect the what this commission.
Yeah, those are quite possible.
And thank you for the point on quality, Connor, because I'd hate to see one of these signs look like our Applebee's sign. That's it's.
Yeah, how tall was that?
Well, I think that's uh that's probably violating our sign ordinance right now.
It's well, it's it it it's degrading.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like.
I think that sign's sixty-five feet tall or sixty feet tall. Um it it's kind of in there. And so last time, and I I partially blame myself, I was a a novice planning intern at that time, but when writing the the sign code, learning the difference between should and shall, and so there are some regulations in there that are recommended. The pole should be cladded. When it should have been changed to, it shall be cladded. So we we didn't wanna be too onerous. We've had multiple attorneys fighting us on the sign code adoption, so we gave a little bit, um but we'll, we could take it for round two.
I I think that the Applebee's situation is because a sign is in uh disrepair and.
Yeah, that's what we can't make.
Is it allowed to be in disrepair?
Code code compliance, code enforcement can do that. Uh there's another sign that's not in good shape, and that's the one uh advertising the hotel sits there uh either also. Uh two more projects for the March fourteenth DRC meeting. Uh mini storage project at twenty-five sixty Feather River, which is behind the Revi's Auto Parts there uh just north of where tractor supply is going.
And they're signed?
Uh. And then lastly, as agreed by this commission, uh A.J. Beck will be providing an update of the progress that he has made on the old Western Motor Lodge, uh twenty-two fifty-five Bird Street. Uh we're very actively engaged with him right now. He has a plan set in uh building plan check right now uh to uh turn it into a motel. Uh but also to do all the frontage and landscaping and paving and all those other improvements that are on the outside that'll make it look quite quite a bit better. So I will, we'll hear about that, be able to discuss that at DRC. March fourteenth.
Uh I just, two things that we had at council recently, if you missed that uh. One is we put it, it we're we engage with an engineering company to do, look at building a microgrid for resiliency that P G N E is required to pay for. So P G N E is is putting up the grant. The total grant would be eighteen million, up to eighteen million dollars, but we're gonna look at one probably around nine million dollars. And we're looking really good for this grant application so far. Uh there was something like thirty-five uh cities that had put in, but um more than half of them didn't engage with an engineering company like we had, which is one of the requirements, so they were all ruled out.
And what's this for?
For the city, for City Hall?
It's no, it's we don't know where it's gonna be at, so we don't know. We um it's for resiliency if P G N E has to shut down.
Yeah.
Wherever we get this thing set up, we'll actually stay active and live. So um I don't know where where we'll put the, you know, to be a a probably a a solar arrays and uh batteries that will keep whatever we choose active for three days.
Building.
Yeah, and they did just uh yesterday, actually yesterday, the P G N E changed their, changed their scope and said that we could do two locations. So uh we were actually gonna submit to anyway, but now we can submit to and maybe actually get to. Um does one thing, and that that's going on, and I think the applications do at the end of April, and uh it's a pretty robust uh process and um so I don't know, fingers crossed, it'd be great if we can get that. It'll be like, you know, when the the nice thing about it is they would pay for building us a uh solar panel structure with batteries. And we get some benefit from that when every day that we don't need it for resiliency. And when we go down, if if they have to shut us down, then we're, we stay alive for a few days. So the other thing was um the skip in the bold program. I don't remember if I talked to you all about that or not, but there's a uh pooled it's a, it's pooled micro bonds uh that are used for developers for um infrastructure fees. So developers have access, they for projects, it would be where they need five hundred thousand to five million dollars, but not big enough to really bond a whole project. So their pooled bonds, they're done, one, one, uh the skip program does it three times a year, and the bold program does them two times a year. So developer can hop into one of these bond products, or one of these bond issuances. And they didn't have to go through quite a bit of underwriting and all that to qualify. And they have to have money to, you know, it's show that they have money for the rest of the project. But with that, they can get uh financing for their infrastructure and for their fees for five percent instead of ten and a half percent. So, yes, the council just approved that a couple of weeks ago or a couple of meetings ago. They, yeah, I don't think they reported that back to you, so.
That's wonderful.
So a couple of our uh subdivision ordinance are looking at these. Uh Linkside Two is talking about it.
Okay.
And Stotley is starting to talk about it too.
So it's Tetra uh for the luxury apartment.
Yeah.
And uh another one too, was it? Oh, actually, I got uh someone's texting me tonight about it. Um I uh Ed Mayor from the county gave up my number, said he should call me, or so he was calling. I told I talked to him in the morning, but he's interested in it. Um the we, this was brought to us from a guy who's a finance person for Linkside Two. And we uh he pitched us to us back in August, but it seemed too good to be true, so we vetted it for quite some time before we took it to council. And um the uh uh he is gonna tell all the developers that we're now, that we have those programs ready for. So he says he's gonna reach out to Lennar and to Bodminian and um all the big fellows.
Jimmy and Ed Mayor from the Housing Authority?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that what if we're lucky, uh this program will help developers fund infrastructure for subdivisions, which is is really kind of a a critical path, what's been stopping a lot of subdivisions from being developed. So we're lucky.
And the uh they're paid back, the bonds are paid back through the end users, so developer build, it's a million. So it's Linkside Two, they feel like they'll be putting seven hundred dollars a month or a year, but it was pretty, it wasn't, it wasn't too bad actually for for um for the purchaser. So in theory, they will sell it for a little bit less because they didn't have to carry all the money that the the purchasers can aim some of that infrastructure cost.
Oh. Over time, not just when they buy the house?
Over thirty years, they could buy out anytime they want to.
But it goes with the property, this.
As an assessment.
Yeah.
Oh, well, a hundred a month would be kind of.
Collected in property taxes.
Okay, so they wouldn't even notice, maybe.
Right.
Okay, but it made the whole thing possible and more affordable to begin with.
Well, this is what we've been told by developers, they just can't, they can't figure it out. When you look at all the fees you have to pay, then you have to put in all the infrastructure, that's up, so. Uh we were not so sure if people would wanna do it or not. I started workshopping it with developers, and then they started calling me and saying like, are you gonna do that?
That's fantastic. We're gonna do it tomorrow.
Yeah, so we we approved it, council approved it two meetings ago.
Great.
Actually, finally look at market housing. My gosh.
So I consider that's one of the
Yeah.
It's not big here, but in cities like you know, Brentwood, Antioch, all those areas where they had, where they had a lot of new infrastructure, they had to do minimal ruse, mark ruse for school loans and what have you. And it was, it could be thirty, forty grand. And then when the market went bad, developers were paying off that bond for that homeowner, so they didn't have to have that as a it was as an incentive to buy, they they wipe that out. But as a purchaser of new home, they have to, they have to be told. Maybe in senior childhood, you're gonna know.
It's in the, right?
Yeah.
It's part of the, it's part of the whole package.
Yeah, yeah.
Here's what you're gonna be paying every month.
Yeah, it's part of your, yeah, yeah, so.
Sometimes.
Yeah.
So it's not, but again, it's all that.
Yeah, it's all that, it's, it's part of your you don't see it, it's in your property tax, but you feel it.
Yeah, yeah, what what time they start feeling it.
Yeah, exactly.
I got one more too, I could say, the today, uh we had a tour of U College with uh uh there is, I don't know, twenty of us that they invited to come out, and so there there it was something that came out of Sean's OCDC uh meetings that he does every Monday nights or once a month. And uh they have a program that allows people to have interns and they pay for the interns. And so uh and I had asked, started asking Wendy Porter about that from the, from U College a while, a while back, about how we might be able to do that, actually bring them down here to do trade schools or some sort of class. So we have a, we started up, kicked off a real discussion about putting a satellite campus down here. There's a lot to figure out, where will they be, how would the buildings will be? What kind of uh programs they'll have, but um the two things we know we have coming up, first, we have all this biomass, all these biomass companies that are interested in coming here and the giant warehouse project. So it's all robots, software and tech. And so we're looking at what will be the best fit for a program here so that we can train people here to have those jobs um and then keep the jobs here. So it was
Great.
loosely been spoken about for a little while, but today it was, today we actually had a real a real meeting of the minds, so we've done that as well.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we will adjourn to March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four at six P M.